The 16th Sangguniang Panlalawigan is now convened for its 87th Regular Session. The Honorable Board Member, Melgabal Art Inkabo, presiding.
Good afternoon. Please bear with me, I will be the Presiding Officer right now. Your Presiding Officer is Pagod, so I have to relinquish the position later. The session is now called order. Secretariat, please. Our prayer will be led by our beautiful Bokal Mercy Rihaanu.
Let's put ourselves in the loving presence of the Lord, in the name of the Father, the Son, and the Holy Spirit. Amen. Lord, we come before you today, asking for your guidance, wisdom, and support as impact once again on the important work of legislation. Continue to remind us, Lord God, that we do here today, all that we accomplish is for the pursuit of truth, for the promotion of peace, and for the service of humanity, especially our people. Please bless our efforts here so that we may be able to perform all our tasks and live up to the challenges ahead of us. We pray for the good health, we pray for the humility to accept our limitations in knowledge, time, and resources. We pray for the generosity to share that we have and what we know. But over and above all else, we pray that even as we continue to work as your board members to advance the well-being of our people. Lord, be our guide in today's proceedings. May your shower us with your vision for us to think and act right as a way of serving you. We humbly say for the good staywords of your grace. Grant that we may be able, but we may become your living instrument for the benefits and well-being of our people. Amen. In the name of the Father, the Son, and the Holy Spirit.
Recognizing Board Member Bokal Jojo Leba to lead the Board Member's Creed.
Please raise your right hand and repeat after me. I am a Provincial Board Member.
I am a Provincial Board Member.
Given the mandate to serve.
Given the mandate to serve.
My constituency through responsible, responsive, and effective legislation.
My constituency through responsible, responsive, and effective legislation.
Provide dynamic leadership.
Provide dynamic leadership.
Promote and maximize the delivery of basic services for the general welfare.
Promote and maximize the delivery of basic services.
Under the regime of a truly consultative and participative democracy.
Under the regime of a truly consultative and participative democracy.
I impose upon myself.
I impose upon myself.
The supreme obligation to perform and carry out the functions.
The supreme obligation to perform and carry out the functions.
Prescribed by law unselfishly and without much dedication.
Prescribed by law unselfishly and without much dedication.
Thereby becoming a genuine catalyst of change.
Thereby becoming a genuine catalyst of change.
In my locality in our nation.
Secretariat, please call the roll. Honorable Aurelio J. Leba III, Honorable Antonio L. Mangukang III, Honorable Bernardin Opis Mercado, Honorable Mercedes Arihano,
Present.
Honorable Danilo Arred,
Present.
Honorable Ishmael Dipilim, Honorable Luceneril El Mangol, Honorable Carlos F. De Peralta, Honorable Bertinos A. Valencia. Mr. Presiding Officer, with the eight members of the board present, we have the necessary quorum for this afternoon's session. The Chair declared the presence of quorum.
Recognizing Bokal... First, we will recognize the presence of our Acting Governor, Bokal Maki, Mr. Pogi Caballes. And also, here with us is the President of MSC. Siguro po, later it will be called MSU under the leadership of Dr. Doddy Solveta. Okay. And now, we will recognize our Pro League Leader, Bokal Jojo Leba.
Thank you very much, Mr. Presiding Officer. Mr. Presiding Officer, for the reading and adoption of the minutes of the previous session, I move that we dispense with the reading of the minutes and consider the same as having been read without prejudice to the manifestation of corrections by the members of the board. I so move.
There's a move to dispense the reading and adoption of the previous minutes. Is there any objection? There's none.
Inviting members of the board to have some corrections to the minutes of the previous session dated May 31, 2024.
Any board members? There's... There's none.
Mr. Presiding Officer, may I move that we approve and adopt the minutes of the 86th Regular Session dated May 31, 2024? I so move.
There is a motion to approve the amendments of the agenda of these minutes of this session. Is there any objection? There's none.
Mr. Presiding Officer, for the matters arising from the minutes, last session, we had adopted a resolution authored by Honorable Mark Julio Speaker Caballes. Congratulating, expressing the provincial governments of Marindukes profound congratulations and commendation to the Marindukes State University for the successful achieving its journey towards universityhood. And with us today to receive the award is no less than the President of the Marindukes State University, Dr. Justado P. Solveta.
Please proceed, Bokal Leba.
May I ask, with humility, the Acting Governor to please read the contents of the resolution.
Our Acting Governor, Bokal Mark Pogi Caballes is now recognized.
Thank you, Mr. Presiding Officer, and sa majority floor leader po namin, Bokal Jojo Leba. So, ito po ay Resolution Number 1374 Series of 2024. A resolution expressing the provincial government of Marindukes profound congratulations and commendation to the Marindukes State University, or Marsu, for successfully achieving its journey towards universityhood. Whereas, Republic Act Number 11334 was enacted into law on April 26, 2019, which converted the Marindukes State College to the Municipality of Buak, which has the satellite campuses in the Santa Cruz, Torrijos, Gason, and Magpog, all in the province of Marindukes, into a state university, to be known as the Marindukes State University, or Marsu. Whereas, the journey of MSC into universityhood started in 2010 through the initiative of then MSC President Dr. Romulo H. Malvar, and with the designation of Dr. Neodigario M. Halos Jr. as focal person, who led in the rolling out of plans, including the funding appropriation, harmonization of development plans, and engagement of stakeholders for collective effort in support of the said endeavor, which was continued and pursued by the succeeding MSC Presidents. Whereas, the law converting MSC into university was first introduced by Congressman Lord Alan Q. Quinto Vilasco, the representative of the lone district of Marindukes in the House of Representatives. On March 2011, during the 15th Congress through House Bill Number 04457, it gained momentum and was approved for third and final reading in the House of Representatives, but failed to garner the support of the majority in the Senate. It was refiled under HB 1820 during the 16th Congress and was reintroduced in July 2016 during the 17th Congress under HB 1281. Then it became HB 8279, when the Senate approved it on March 2019, until it was finally signed into law by then-President Rodrigo R. Duterte on 2019 and enrolled as RA 11344. Whereas, to be able to use the name Marindukes State University, the MSC, through the administration, focal person, and the technical working group had undergone extensive and tedious efforts to be able to comply with the requirements for universityhood set forth by the Commission on Higher Education in RA 11344. Whereas, after a long journey, the MSC, through its current President Dr. Justado P. Solveta and the entire school administration, had finally complied with all the requirements for conversion into university. Thus, on May 27, 2024, the MSC had already become the Marindukes State University, which is a momentous and historic date to all the Marindukesños. Therefore, upon the favorable recommendation of the Committee on Education, Culture, and Arts, and motion of its chairperson, Honorable Danilo Arred, unanimously seconded by all the Sangguniang Panlalawigan members present, it was resolved, as it is hereby resolved, to express the provincial government of Marindukes profound congratulations and commendation to the Marindukes State University for successfully achieving its journey towards universityhood. It was resolved finally that a copy of this resolution be furnished to the Marindukes State University through its president and to all others concerned for their information, adopted this 31st day of May 2024 at Buak, Marindukes. Certified to be duly adopted by James L. Solas as Vice Secretary and attested by... Me. So... So, behalf of our honorable Vice Governor, Lina Angeleso, who is in official travel po today, in behalf of our Congressman Lord Alan Vilasco and Governor Presby Vilasco and all the members of the 16th Sangguniang Panlalawigan, we would like to congratulate again and extend our... With all humility and pride, our commendation to our guest of honor today, President Doddy Solveta. We are all very proud of you and we would like to invite you po here today for a small, or a short, or a brief message. Ay, hindi pa pala.
Before that, we will call our awardee, Dr. Doddy Solveta, to receive the recognition. So, we call on Dr. Doddy Solveta.
May we request the author and sponsor to please go to the stage together with the Presiding Officer. We would like also to request the rest of the members of the board to go to the stage for a victorial opportunity with the President of the Marindukes State University. Sir, sir Doddy, wag po munang umalis dyan at magapapitso po tayo together with the rest of the members of the board.
Again, a big congratulation to Dr. Doddy Solveta. May we call on Doc Solveta to give us some messages. Thank you. Recognizing Dr. Solveta.
Thank you, Mr. Presiding Officer, for the opportunity to all the members of this honorable August body, to our dear Governor of the Province, Honorable Presby Vilasco, the honorable author of the bill, the honorable Lord Alan J. Quinto Vilasco, to the people of Marindukes, to all of us here present, a pleasant good afternoon. It is the ambition of Marindukes to be called Marindukes State University and is the time during the time of the honorable Congressman Lord Alan Quinto Vilasco who made this possible. We all of these, the provincial government of Marindukes, especially all of you who is present today, that we shared this honor to all of us here present. The people of Marindukes, because without the support of each Marindukesño, this bill, this law will not be a reality. This is much harder compared to other thing in Marindukes. Because we exerted all the effort, with all the possible hardship we encounter, all we had, three times, isinalang po ito sa ating CEB, or Commission in Bank, for approval, pero may nakikita pa mga deficiencies. But because we work harder to complement each one and to comply with all the requirements given, May 27 is very remarkable because May 27 is the approval of our university. However, the official proclamation and turnover will be on July 4. July 4 is very momentous events for Marindukes because the board will come here, the board will change from Board of Trustees to Board of Regents, changes of Marindukes State College here, changes of the logo, changes of the structure, changes of everything. So on that date, we will have our board meeting to do it. And the appointment of the first university president will be done during that day. So, it is very important to note that this is very, very good accomplishment, not only of Marindukes State College, but all the people of Marindukes. This is not... Ito po ay hindi amin. Ito po ay sa bawat isang mamamayang Marindukesño na nagnanais makakuha ng edukasyon na mahusay dito sa ating Lalawigan. Isang malaking pasasalamat sapagat kung hindi ito na i-file ng dalawang beses, hindi po ito mangyayari. It is very providential na talagang sa panahon ng ating kagalanggalan na kinatawan at naging speaker, ito ay lalong napadali. Sapagat alam naman natin lahat na pagtayo ay congressman at lalo na kung tayo ay speaker, ang namumuno talagang mabilis ang lahat na mga nangyayaring ito. Equally important din ang lahat ng support ng Gobernador at ninyo dito sa Sangguniang Panlalawigan, at lalo na katulong din naman si Bokal Inkabo sapagat ang ilang building dito ay siya rin ang gumawa na nakatulong din para maisa katuparan ang requirements sa ating Unibersidad. Kaya, mula sa puso, hindi ko napudadagdagam pa papuri sa buong Lalawigan, sa bawat mamamayan na Marindukes, alalahanin po ninyo na sa Marindukes State University patuloy, may rumpong sa inyong tunay na nagmamahal. Mapagpalang araw po sa ating lahat.
Thank you, Dr. Doddy. Any member of the August body to say something to our good President, Dr. Doddy?
Pwede po bang mapuun mula natin sa unaan sa...
Dr. Doddy!
Pwede po bang mabigyan ng upuan si Dr. Doddy?
Dr. Doddy, our majority floor leader is requesting you to take a seat here in front of us, while other members will say something. Yes, Bokal Jojo Leba, you are recognized.
Una po ay ang aking pagbati sa whole community of the Marindukes State College na proklama na bilang Marindukes State University. Lalong-lalo na po sa kanilang effort, talaga pong alam ko naman po ang kapaguran at kasigasigan ng ating kapatid na si... Kapatid kuya Doddy Solveta ang ginawa dito para ang pinakamimiting from Marindukes School of Arts and Trade, naging Marindukes Institute of Science and Technology, naging Marindukes State College, at ngayon po ang kauna-unahan at kaysa-isang Unibersidad sa Lalawigan ng Marindukes ay natamo ng termino niya na siya ang Pangulo ng Marindukes State College. Galo na rin po ang pasasalamat natin sa ating Congressman Lord Alan Vilasco at kay Governor Presby Tero Vilasco. Kaakyat po dito ay ang pagbati na ang Marindukes State College ay nakapagproduce ng limang certified public accountants, na isa na lamang milestone sa paaralan ito. Congratulations po and good wishes po sa Marindukes State University.
Maraming salamat po, Bokal Jojo Leba, sa iyong marugdug na pananalita. Anybody from our... Yes, Bokal Tres Mangukang, you are now recognized.
Maraming salamat po, Ginontika Pangulo. Alam po ninyo, tayo ay naka-live sa Marindukes News. Ano po, ito ay napakahabang historia sa buhay ng ating first-ever president of the Marindukes State University. Maraming panahon na siya ay nag-apply bilang Pangulo, lumaban, nakibaka, subalit na bigo ng ilang beses. Subalit sa panahon ng ating minamahal at inilagaling-lagalang na Congressman Lord Alan Q. Vilasco at ang ating mahal at ating gob... Presby Vilasco, na igawas sa kanya at nakua niya ang matagal niyang minimitik na maging Pangulo ng Marindukes State College. At siya ay higit pa sa isang kapatid, sa isang kaibigan sa inyopong sa representasyong ito. At alam ko ang kanyang journey sa pagtahak upang maging isang ganap na university ang Marindukes State College. Alam ko ang hirap niya at kasama pa ako sa pagakyat at sa paglabi kung saan-saang mga ahensya ng pamalaan para makamit ito. You deserve this, Mr. President. Congratulations. At alam ko na mas higit pa na mapapabuti ang Marindukes State University bilang kayo ang kauna-unahang Pangulo ng Marindukes State University. Congratulations.
Thank you, Bokal Tres. Anybody? Yes, from the second district of Marindukes, Bokal Mr. Gabi Concepcion of Santa Cruz, Bokal Lim.
Yes, Mr. Chair and to our esteemed guest, Sir Doddy. So many in the past have aspired, but it was during your administration that it transpired. Congratulations is in order. Congratulations.
Thank you, Bokal Lim. Yes, Bokal Bertinos, you are recognized.
Unang-una po, congratulations po, Mr. President, Pres. Doddy Solveta. Bukod po sa ano, pagcongratulations sa inyo, ako po ay natutuwa dahil bilang isang estudyante na Marindukes State College, masisilayan ko ang pagiging Marindukes State University. Maraming, maraming salamat po.
Thank you, Bokal Bertinos. Yes, Bokal Mercy, you are now recognized.
Pangulo ng ating MSC University. Kami po ay... Ah, ah, MS University, Maso? Ma... MarSU. Marso. MarSU. Congratulations, Mr. President. At we are... Kami po ay nagpapasalamat at kami po ay bumabati sa iyo na ikaw ay naging unang-unang Pangulo na 'yan ay naging university na ang ating MS, dating MSC. So, 'yan po rin ay ating pasasalamat din sa suporta ng ating Marindukesños, sa mga estudyante, mga magulang, people of Marindukes who are patronizing our MSC University. Kaya po, maraming, maraming salamat sa effort, most especially para tingin din po sa iyong mga guru, sa iyong mga professions, professionals na nagtataguyod sa ating paaralan. At gawin din po ang pagtaguyod ng ating Marindukesño bilang tayo'y nagpumasok sa isang university na tulad nito. Sa inyopong lahat, congratulations po.
Thank you, Bokal Mercy. In behalf of the 16th Sanggunian, we are proud of you, Dr. Doddy. You led MSC to become MSU University. It is our pride, it is pride ng Marinduke. Kasi ang magiging presidente niyan ay kayo na, purong Marindukanyo. Kami po ay natutuwa, nagagalak. At alam po namin, sa iyong pamumuno, mas lalo pa pong gaganda ang ating unibersidad. Mas marami pang matutulong ang kababayan natin. Sabi ko nga po kanina, na nagbabiyahi ko kanina, sabi ko, sa mga kasabay ko, ang aming pong unibersidad, ang aming pong college na MSC ay napakagaling. Nagpo-produce po ito ng mga top-notch chair sa board. Maraming salamat po, Dr. Doddy. At in behalf of the 16th Sanggunian, kami po ay napapasalamat sa iyo, congratulations po. Yes, before we add, yes, Bokal Mercy, you are recognized.
Ako lamang po ay may kadagdagan. At maraming, maraming salamat po sa RRR Inkabo sa pagano ng building sa ating Pung MSC.
Para po sa inyong kaalaman, 'yung kapatid ko po talaga nagconstruct ng dalawang building dyan. Opo, siya po. At siguro maganda po naman ang pagkagawa, Dr. Doddy. Okay, maraming salamat po. At again, congratulations, Dr. Doddy. And, yes, Dr. Doddy. Dr. Doddy, please use our microphone.
May add po, ano, hindi ko nabati 'yung iba dito, hindi ko naisa-isa. Salamat sa inyo. Alam na ninyo yoon, si estudyantiko, si Honorable Bertinos, thank you sa'yo. Oo, at sa lahat ng naririto. At dito, sa Sekretariat, Matit and Adres, Sir Carlo. Pinagmamalaki lang natin ngayon at sa kasi acting Governor, Maki Kaballes, na member ng faculty ko. Ang accountancy natin po ngayon napakaganda kasi buong Pilipinas ang pumasalamang po ay 3.92. 30.92, meaning sa sampot tatlo sa national passing rate. Ang Marinduke first-taker po ito ha, halos 60%. Kasi po, 'yung isa po ay conditional among, meaning tatlong subject talaga kukunin CPA na rin po. Kaya mataas po ang ating passing na lampa sam pa po natin na ibang unibersiting mas matagal na. Kaya talagang huwag na kayong magturo. Lahat ng matatili ng bata gusto mag-aral kailangan sa Marinduke State University na pumasok. Salamat po.
Thank you, Dr. Doddy. Naririnig niyo, mga kasama, 'yung ating pong mga anak, mga mahal sa buhay, huwag niyan na po natin paluwasin dito na po natin pag-aralin sa MSU. Yes, Bokal Jojo Leba.
Pwede po ba magtanong kay Sir Doddy? What can we expect in the future for MSC?
Dr. Doddy, our colleague here is asking you if... Pwede po bang magtanong sa'yo? Yes, Bokal Jojo Leba, you are recognized.
Ang katanong ako po ay what can we expect sa MSC in the future?
Opo, alam ninyo, nung 23 and a half years ko, walang basher. Nung 27 po ng hapon, may basher na, agad-agad. At hanggang kahapon, may lumalabas pa mga malining information. Siyempre, what to expect is more than what is expected before. Kasi 'yung unang taon, masyadong mabait si Presidente Doddy, kaya walang ng bash. Kailangan pala ang leadership, may kaunti pa ring akabig. Hindi pwedeng mabait ka lang, kailangan medyo may kaunti ka ring angas. To expect is world ranking. Meron po tayong world ranking at gagawin natin engineering na world, 'yung pong ating tinatawag na Washington Accord. Kaya pasensya na in public sasabihin ko, hindi namin ipapasa ang labing anim sa civil engineering course kasi bagsak sila sa pre-review. So kailangan uli nilang pumasok dahil masisira ang quality kung kukuha sila na exam na they are not ready. May letters na po ako natanggap, hindi ko po muna, sasagutin ko na kailangan mag-review muna. Kasi nahihila po ang passing sa National Licenseure Exam pag sila ay pagbibigyan natin. Pangalawa, mas mahigpit na ngayon kesa noon, medyo may pakiusapang pa ang pagentrant, ano? Pwedeng pakiusap muna ngayon kung talagang two ang grade, pag third year na nagkaroon ng 2.5, hindi natatanggapin sa accountancy at sa engineering, paralung tumaaas ang quality ng education dito sa Lalawigan ng Marinduke. So, ang makikita po ninyo, magaganda is the state of the art kasi po nagbigay na naman through the initiative of our Congressman, meron po tayong 2024 allocation, 1.7 billion pesos for digitalization. Smart University po tayo. So magkakaroon ng magagandang auditorium na ano, computerization at iba't-iba pang makikita ninyo sa Marinduke State University. At ang Santa Cruz po, aaralin din natin dahil may mga taga-second district, kung ano talaga ang nababagay na kurso na talagang naaayon sa mandato ng isang unibersidad sa Santa Cruz, Marinduke. At ganun din, gumaganda din naman ng ating School of Agriculture. Atin na ang lupa 100 hectares na kuha ng ating panahon. So mayroon na po tayong 100 hectares sa Turihos, 'yan po ay pinagkaabalahan ng inyong lingkod. Kompleto na rin po tayo sa titulo. At may nakuha po tayong campus sa Mugpog, 'yan po ay aayusin natin. May rum po ang Chamber of Commerce na ginagawa pa rin doon na tatlong building. 'Yan po ay sa initiative din naman ng kagalanggalan nating kaibigan, si Bokal Lim. So marami pong inaasahan natin, maraming tumutulong. At natitiya ko, we are competitive with any other university in the country today. At 'yan po ay gawa sa masipag na talagang lagi akong kinakalampag. Talagang quality education si Love, si ating Congressman Lord Alan Vilasco at si Governor, na dapat quality of education ang ibigay natin sa ating Lalawigan. Lalo nga 'yung mga panahon na ito, na talagang ang social media, medyo ang technology ay madami, marami ang lasong sa social media na kinakailangan nating matugunan din. May negative impact din sa tao ang media. Kaya napakagusto ko ang media sa Marinduke, very good. Ang sinagot ko lang nung may nagtanong sa akin tungkol sa narinig fiasko, "You see, Marinduke, tignan ninyo ang building, tignan ninyo ang paligid, tapos ang building at maayos na nagawa." At kung mayroon mang repair na ginagawa, dahil metikoloso ang presidente, gusto ng presidente mas maganda, may mga binabakbaka akong iba doon at ginagawa naman nila. Pati poso negro, hindi ko pinayagang ilagay mismo doon sa dati na pinalagay ko, nagpabago ako sa kanila ng poso negro. Kaya may ginagawa pa rin ngayon 'yung bagong poso negro para sa hygiene naman na makabataan sa Marinduke. So magaganda po, ang akowa naman po ang sabi nila sa project doon is, finish the project and monitor the project. Kaya siyempre, may mga malistiyoso na ipinopost sa social media at hanggang rappler, 'yan po ay walang katutuhanan. As record suggests, Marinduke is open, Marinduke State University is open, makikita ninyo ang mga building nagtatayuan. At ang hindi nakikita, hingi ng hingi ang Marinduke State College ng mga pintura. At talaga pong ang pintura ng dating berdi, binalik namin 'yung dating kulay nung ano ngayon po ay burgundy ang kulay. Nanghingi kami, pati may hinihingi pa akong hanggang ngayon kay Honorable Leva na mga sapeys, na mga donasyon. At ang mga magulang din po mismo nagpipintura, 'yan po ay mga good practices na hindi kasama sa ating mga ginagawa. Pero makikita po ninyo ang ganda-ganda dahil sa pagtutulungan na mamamayan na Marinduke, may pintura po. Maganda na ang tignan ang MARSU. M, maliit na letter, A, R, S na malaki, and U na malaki, MARSU. Kasi po pagbarso parang buwan, kaya medyo maarte, medyo ang presidente, ginawa akong parang competitive worldwide, MARSU talaga, magandang title.
Thank you, Dr. Doddy. Yes, our acting Governor, Bokal Maki Kaballes.
Thank you po, Mr. Presiding Officer. Pres, may tanong lahat po kami. Dahil kami po sa profession namin, mga lawyers po ng Marinduke, matagal na pong pangarap, pati po ni Governor Pres, may na magkaroon na po ng law school dito sa Marinduke. Kaya sana po ay mapa-in due time po.
Ang mangyayari po na unang mandato sa Pangulo ng Unibersidad ay tignan ang mga kursong nararapat ilagay at alisin ang mga wala na hindi na in-demand sa industriya. Marami po natin tinitingnan, nandiyan po ang BSN Music. Maraming magagaling na singer sa Lalawigan. Congratulate din natin dito 'yung si Mr. Mangi, taga-atin sa Mugpog. Siya po ay Manya Kumlaude, BSN Music in Voice, less Voice, medyo in Voice. At 'yan po ay ating gagawin, pati po ang law, ang dean lang po ang ating hahanapin, pero pwede naman si Governor kasi mga justices talaga ang dean ng College of Law. Live dito, oo, parang, oo. We will consider law.
Thank you po.
Thank you, Dr. Doddy. Totoo po 'yan, Marindukanyos are very talented. Even here in our, sa 16th Pangspasanggunian, meron po kami dito na isang napakagaling na singer. Dangan lamang po at siguro ay medyo pagod pa aalayin sana kayo na isang awitin si Bokal Tres. So, see you soon for next time. Yes, Bokal Dani Red, you are recognized.
Unang-una, thank you, Mr. Chair. Unang-una, sir, congratulations. Itatanong ko lang, tayo ay state colleges, di ba? Di, 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 tayo ay, tayo ay galing sa state colleges, tayo, di ba? So libre lahat ang tuition fees?
Ah, lahat po ng tuition, opo.
Ngayon, sir, ang katanungan ko, ngayon tayo ay MARSU. MARSU. Tayo ay libre pa rin ba, ganun pa rin?
Libre pa rin po ang ating tuition fees. 'Yan po ay salamat sa TES, 'yan po ay ating free education access. Ang kinakalukot ko na ibalita, wala na tayong grade 11 and 12. Pero meron po naman po tayong junior high school na may ni-maintain para laboratory naman po na nag-aaral ng education. So libre pa rin po, the same thing, libre ang tuition. May scholarship pa pong nata tanggap, kaya doble-doble na naibigay sa mga bata ngayon. Kaya pag hindi pa nag-aaral ang mga bata, aywang ko na lang talaga matatamad na ito mga batang ito.
Thank you, thank you, sir. Niliwanag ko lang para ba kayong iba magtanong na tayo ay unibersity na ngayon, galing tayo na tayo ay state college. Para maintindihan nila na libre pa rin ang pag-aaral sa MARSU. Thank you, thank you, sir.
Thank you, Bokal Dani. Napakaganda po na, Bokal Doddy, President Doddy. Kasi parang ang mangyayari po niyan eh, because of the MARSU, ang ating Marinduke magiging Marinduke walang bungol. Ano po, Dr. Doddy, tawa po ba? Dahil andyan po ang ano, andyan po ang MARSU, talagang nagpo-produce po sila ng magagaling na Marindukanyo. Again, yes, Bokal Dani.
Mr. Chair, isang katanungan ako kay Sir Doddy. Tinataas po natin pilit ang standard ng ating pong MARSU, ano po. Kaya lang, nabanggit niyo pag bumabanan ng 2 ang grade. Out na sila dun sa engineering at accountancy.
Accountancy, pero pwede naman po sila pumasok.
Sir, alimbawa, si Bokal Tinos, ipangarap niya talagang maging accountant. Kaya lang, siya ay 2.5. Ang ano niya, paano po ang, gusto ko talaga mag-aaral libre. So ano po ang dapat nating maitulong sa mga mag-aaral na ganun ang sitwasyon?
First year pa lang po, ginagawa na natin ng turuan sila mentor-mentino magagaling na estudyante hanggang second year po. Kaya kung talaga pong nakinig ang isang estudyante ng first two years hanggang accounting four, accounting one, accounting three and four po, makikita na natin sa bata na kung 2.5 siya ng first year, tataas na siya ng mga 2 hanggang sa marating na 'yung ano. At saka may battery of test naman po sa third year. Kung hindi pa rin po talaga siya papasa doon, definitely po, lilipat namin siya sa courses like BSBA, BS Entrepreneurship, related pa rin naman po sa business. Para lang po 'yung pagpasas sa licenseure exam ay masiguro natin na talagang halos lahat pumapasa.
Opo, okay, thank you, thank you, Sir Doddy.
Thank you, Bokal Dani. The Office of the Vice Governor has prepared a merienda for our dear Mr. President. Sasamahan po namin si Dr. Doddy sa baba para mag-merienda sa sandali. Together with our acting Governor, sasamahan po natin baka po para po may bodyguard ang ating presidente sa pagbaba. Baka po ma ano, and State, yeah, State University. And I will relinquish the chairmanship. Sasamahan po namin si Dr. Doddy sa baba. And I'll request Bokal Rianno to take over the chairmanship. Thank you, Bokal Rianno.
Session resume. Mr. Pro Leader, what is the parliamentary situation?
The parliamentary status is we still on the matters arising from the minutes. And may I ask that we recognize the gentleman from Mugpog.
Honorable Mangkukang, you are recognized.
Thank you, Madam Chair, thank you, Mr. Pro Leader. This representation would like to manifest that this particular matter be considered to tackle on the committee of the whole and is still lead by the Committee on Environmental Protection and Human Ecology, Madam Chair. I so move.
What particular matter is...
Letter from, letter from Honorable Governor, Presbitero J. Vilasco Jr., Returning Provincial Ordinance Number 216, Series of 2023, entitled "The Marinduke Environment Code of 2023", without signature and with comments, opinion that Section 42 is ultra-verse on the ground that A, it is contrary to the Article 12, Section 2 of the Constitution, the Mining Act of 1991. B, it prohibits trade. C, it is inconsistent with declared under Executive Order 79. And D, it is unreasonable. I so move, Madam Chair.
Okay, so repair for the committee of the whole. So in that matter, this will be as a committee of the, by the environmental?
Committee.
By the committee. Next, agenda.
That's all for the matters arising from the minutes. We are now on the approval of agenda and amendment of agenda. We don't have any privileged speech. We don't have any question. Our product messages as correspondence from the Governor. We have one item and various sub items. For the communications and petitions, we have, originally, we have 10 items. However, upon scrutiny of the letter from Masek, it was received only yesterday, June 6, at 1:12 PM, which is beyond our deadline. So it should not be considered in the agenda for today's session. So next.
Next.
Is proposed ordinance, proposed resolution. We have one committee report. Madam Presiding Officer, may I move for the approval of today's agenda as corrected? I so move.
Ah, there is a, there is a motion for the approval of the agenda. Is there any objection from the floor? There is none, the agenda is to be tackled for today is approved.
We don't have privileged speech, we don't have question hour. For the committee report, may I ask that we recognize the chairperson of the committee on appropriation for its committee report?
Honorable Ismael Lim, recognized.
Thank you, Madam Chair, ah, our floor leader, my colleagues, good afternoon. Ah, Madam Chair, I present you with, ah, committee report of the Committee on Appropriations, Committee Report Number 411-2024, with the subject calendar year 2025 Annual Investment Program, AIP, of the Province of Marinduke. In attendance, Madam Chair, were the following members, ah, myself, Honorable Mark Julius Picabales, Honorable Danilo R. Redd, Honorable Jose Narell Mangol, and non-members were Honorable Marjedes Arreano, Honorable Antonio El Mangu Kang III. And the recommendations, Madam Chair, are as follows. Based on the foregoing, the committee hereby recommends for the adoption of a resolution approving calendar year 2025 Annual Investment Program, AIP, of the Province of Marinduke, as approved and endorsed by the Provincial Development Council through PDC Resolution Number 61-2024, with the following recommendations. One, that the establishment of Presby Training Center under the Livelihood, Manpower, and Development Public Employment Service Office, LMD Peso, be increased to 5 million pesos. Two, that the Animal Health Program under the Provincial Veterinary Office, PIVET, be increased to 4 million pesos, and that the following be included under the Department of Education. Dep, A, training for teachers on journalism, 300,000 pesos. Participation of learners in regional national journalism competition, 500,000 pesos. Support in special needs education is NED, 500,000 pesos. Four, that the medical equipment under the Santa Cruz District Hospital, SCDH, amounting to 300,000 pesos be deleted. Five, that the rehabilitation improvement of Tambangan Hagimit be increased to 25 million pesos. Ah, improvement of, ah, yeah, Tambangan Hagimit Road, sorry. Ah, and that, ah, that six, that, ah, under the Provincial Disaster Reduction Management Office, PDRMO, the general service wages be increased to 12 million pesos. That the purchase of, ah, two emergency rescue boat for first district and second district be increased to 30 million pesos. And the purchase of one mobile, ah, one unit mobile command and communication center be increased to 30 million pesos, Madam Chair. Those were the recommendations, not only of the committee, but also of the department heads, Madam Chair. And respectfully submitted, Ismael DP Lim, Chairperson, concurred by Mark Julius Picabales, Vice Chairperson, Danilo R. Redd, Member, Jose Narell Mangol, Member, Bertinus E. Valencia, Member, Adeline M. Angeles, Vice Governor, Executive Member, Madam Chair. The committee report, Committee Report Number 411-2024, Committee on Appropriations. Ah, we, um, Madam Chair, I hereby submit.
Okay, any suggestion or any objection with the report, the committee report? The chairperson none. So the committee report on appropriation, number 412-2024, regarding the CY 2025 Annual Investment Program of the Province of Marinduke is, ah, will be adopted.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Moving further, that the, that the proposed resolution stipulated in the recommendation be included in the business of the day, Madam Chair, I so move.
Okay, thank you. Thank you, Committee on Appropriation. Next.
We now go to the calendar of business, we don't have any unfinished business. For the business for the day is the accompanying resolution of the Committee on Appropriation.
Honorable Ismael Lim, recognized.
Thank you, Madam Chair, and again, ah, our floor leader. Madam Chair, ah, I move that, ah, the, ah, as a, as an option of, ah, the committee report, of the Committee on Appropriations, I move, Madam Chair, that, ah, that, ah, that we pass a resolution approving calendar year 2025 Annual Investment Program, AIP, of the Province of Marinduke as approved and endorsed by the Provincial Development Council through PDC Resolution Number 61-2024, ah, with the recommendations stipulated in the committee report, Madam Chair, I so move.
Ah, any objection? Ah, the, as the resolution is approved.
Thank you, Madam Chair.
That's all for the business for the day, we don't have any assigned business. We don't have any proposed ordinance or resolution for third and panel leading.
Is there any announcement? Yes, Honorable Ismael Lim?
Madam Chair, ah, this representation and, ah, and also, ah, on the, also on the part of the, ah, the youth, ah, of our PPSK president, Madam Chair, I move for reconsideration relative to the, ah, to the, ah, recently referred to the Committee on Appropriation and the Joint Committee on Appropriation and the Youth, ah, with regards to the, ah, LYDP, ah, Madam Chair, ah, Local Youth Development Plan of Calendar 2025 to 2026, Madam Chair.
I think it is referred to the committee now.
Yes, Madam Chair, and, ah, and, ah, having consulted my, ah, my peers, Madam Chair, the committee is, ah, ready to render.
To render a report.
Committee report, Madam Chair.
Hey.
With the intelligence of the body.
So, ah, with some consideration, Honorable Leba, with some consideration of the two gentlemen of the, ah, SK and the honorable appropriation. Ah, there is a consideration to tackle, as to render the committee report regarding the agenda letter, ah, the, our, under the Communication and Petition Number Two Letters from Mr. Dandrib de Los Reyes, Provincial Youth Development Officer, noted by the PPSK President Bertinus Valencia, submitting to the Sanggunian Palalawigan a copy of, ah, Local Youth Development Plan, CY 2025-2026 of the Province of Marinduke involving the appropriation of 12885. So, this.
So what is the ruling of the Chair, Madam, on the request?
Ah, Madam Chair.
Yeah, so did, ah, with that consideration, the committee will report, they will have a report.
We will render our committee report, ah, Madam Chair.
Before we give them the opportunity to report, may I also ask reconsideration if the Committee on Appropriation will allow that they also report on item number one, since this is just, ah, in, ah, implementation of national, ah, ah, circulars? With regards to the RATA and, ah.
Ah, yes. The three, the four, ah, the four items, ah, the four sub-laters, the sub, ah, agenda, I, the sub, ah, item of letter of number one agenda on the messages and correspondence of the Governor. Is that just?
It is the belief of this representation, Madam Chair, that no one would, ah, object to this.
So with that consideration, Mr. Floor Leader?
Yes.
Ah, is there any objection with the reconsideration to be, that message, the, the messages and corresponding from the Governor will be tackled and for the business for today?
So may I just ask the secretary to put the discussion in a proper order in the minutes of the?
The passage, yes.
So, Madam Presiding Officer, may I ask that we recognize the chairperson of the Committee on Appropriation for its committee report?
Okay, Honorable, ah, ah, gentleman from Santa Cruz, recognized.
Madam Chair, ah, and again, Madam Chair, and our, ah, ah, floor leader and my colleagues, ah, Madam Chair, ah, in line with, ah, with the letter, ah, in the agenda, and, ah, having conferred with my colleagues, Madam Chair, I present a committee report on the Committee of Appropriation, ah, with the subject, ah, the request of, ah, the Governor for, ah, an enactment of a resolution providing for the following. One, increase in of mandatory counterpart share of the provincial government from current 100 pesos to 200 pesos, or to mandatory monthly contribution of members to the Pag Ibig Fund effective February 1, 2024. Two, grant of monetization of 30 days leave credits to all qualified officials and employees of the provincial government. Three, grant to increase the, ah, in representation and transportation allowances RATA to officials of the provincial government effective January 1, 2024, pursuant to DVM Local Budget Circular Number 157 dated May 3, 2024. And finally, the grant of increase in uniform clothing allowance for calendar year 2024 to provincial officials and employees pursuant to Budget Circular Number 2024, ah, dash, ah, 1 dated April 4, ah, 2024, Madam Chair. And, ah, the committee, ah, the committee hereby recommends in favor of the passage of, ah, a resolution pertaining to the subject, Madam Chair. And, ah, also, the.
Okay.
On the subject of, ah, and also.
Honorable Chairman, let's, ah, first approve, the first, ah, what you have reported.
Okay, Madam Chair.
Okay.
I submit.
Okay, so, ah, any objection to the later request of our Governor for a resolution providing appropriation, ah, what the committee submitted? And if the, the chairperson none, so the le, the resolution approving appropriation to increase the mandatory counterpart share of the provincial government for, from the concurrent 100, 100 to 200 pesos, the mandatory monthly contribution of the members of the Pag Ibig Fund effective, ah, February 1, 2024 is approved. And otherwise, and also.
And moving further, that, ah, the accompanying resolution.
Okay, so this omnibus motion, ah, regarding the letter of the Governor requesting the enactment of the resolution, ah, providing appropriation is approved. Next, ah, item.
Continuing, Madam Chair, ah, continuing with the, my committee report, Madam Chair, ah, on the, on the subject of, ah, the, the.
PPSK.
Request of, ah, of the local youth, ah, of our, ah, local, ah, provincial youth development officer, and noted by our PPSK president, and, ah, duly signed by our provincial Governor. Madam Chair, this representation, and this, ah, the committee, the committee hereby recommends that for, ah, in favor of the passage of a resolution, ah, to, ah, approving the local youth development plan calendar year 2025 to 2026 of, ah, the Province of Marinduke involving the appropriation amounting to 2,805,000 pesos, Madam Chair. Ah, this representation moves for the adoption of, ah, the committee report.
Any objection? There is, the chairperson none. Ah, in a second to the motion of Honorable, ah, seconded by Honorable Bertinus, of course, and Honorable Danny Redd. So, the, ah, ano yun? The committee report of, ah, the, ano yun? The committee report regarding the, the development plan of, ah, year 2025-2026 of the Province of Marinduke of the, ah, involving the appropriation of 2.5, of 2.2, 2.885 we, is approved and adopted.
Thank you, Madam Chair.
Moving further, that the accompanying resolution be.
Ah, yes, moving further, Madam Chair, that the accompanying resolution be included in the business of the day.
Okay, that the resolution will be approved and adopted for the business for today. Honorable Floor Leader, any?
We now go to the business for the day, and again, would like to rec, we are asking for the recognition of the Chairperson of the Committee on Appropriation.
Say, ah, Honorable, ah, Ismael Lim, recognized.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Ah, Madam Chair, I move for an omnibus motion, ah, for the, ah, ah, passage of, ah, the resolutions. The resolutions, ah, Madam Chair, one is that, ah, a resolution providing for an appropriation of the following. Ah, one increase of mandatory counterpart share of the provincial government from the current 100 pesos to 200 pesos. To mandatory monthly contributions of members of Pag Ibig Fund effective February 1, 2024. Two, grant of monetization of 30 days leave credits to all qualified officials of the, and employees of the provincial, the provincial government. Three, increase in the representation and transportation allowances RATA to officials of the provincial government effective January 1, 2024, pursuant to DVM Local Budget Circular Number 157 dated May 3, 2024. And finally, ah, four, grant of increase in uniform clothing allowance of, ah, for calendar year 2024 to provincial officials and employees pursuant to Budget Circular Number 2024, ah, one dated April 4, 2024. And, ah, and the other, and another for, ah, the passage of a resolution approving the local youth development plan calendar year 2025 to 2026 of the Province of Marinduke involving appropriation amounting to 2,805,000 pesos, Madam Chair, I so move.
Okay, any objection?
Second.
Seconded, it, ah, in a second to the motion, it's a seconded by Honorable, ah, Honorable Leba and Honorable Bertinus. So the omnibus motion of, ah, our Committee on Appropriation, ah, regarding the resolution providing the, ah, the, providing appropriation for this, ah, that is mentioned from the letter of the Governor, ah, is approved and adopted.
Thank you, Madam Chair.
Is there any announcement?
There is none, I would like to request for the recognition of Honorable Bertinus Valencia.
Okay, Honorable Bertinus.
Madam Chair, I move for adjournment of the decision.
So it has been moved and, ah, seconded. Any second to the motion of Honorable Bertinus? Any objection? So the motion of Honorable Bertinus is approved. Ah, the, our session will be, ah, on, our next session will be on June 14. June 14, okay. So our session adjourned.